This is the May 8th, 2019 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped. We have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda is the secretary's report from April 10th. Does anyone have any clarifications to their minutes for questions? If not, we need a motion to accept.
I need a motion to accept the secretary's report. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the budget report. So we're in the last two months of FY '19, and the report that you have today is as of today, ladies. We are pretty much where we expect to be on every line. The salary line projected ahead for the next two months, and our salary line will fully cover our salary expenses until the end of the fiscal year, so we're good in salary. And as for operating, you'll see we're at 94.4% spent out of operating, and I expect to at least be 99% spent out within the next two months. So there will be nothing remaining there. You'll see that the material line is 100% spent out as of today, and so we are fully using state aid now for the rest of the fiscal year on material. We have about $7,000 left to spend on material in the next two months in order to meet our state requirement, so that will come from our state aid fund. Other than that, unless you have any questions, please stand with us. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay. Motion. Motion to accept the budget.
Make a motion to accept budget.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, next is the standing committees. We're going to talk about just the committees that we have and see if we want to change up the volunteers or if we want to leave everything how it is. So we have the facilities. We have Diane and Henry. You want to keep that the way it is, or are you happy with that?
Very good.
Is that okay with you? Okay? All right, let's see. Finance, we have Nancy. Do you want to stick with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right, this is good. All right.
Easy, you're an Asian.
Okay, we have governance. We have, right now we have Nancy.
Yep.
I'll stick with that one, okay? And then long-range planning as well.
Are you on that too?
You are on that one for long-range planning. That's a long way off.
It's a long range.
We're not there yet.
Yeah. And it was Kristen, so I'm going to replace Kristen on the long-range planning as well. And we had personnel, but we talked about that, and I really don't think that that's really even necessary. But the one new committee is going to be the Centennial Committee, which we would definitely need volunteers for. Anyone?
I will volunteer for that.
Okay?
Yeah, so will I.
Okay.
My strength would be at least to start out by helping Nancy with the governance and the finance.
Fantastic.
That's more my experience.
Great.
That's good.
I'm going to add you, Steve, to those two. Perfect. Sounds good.
Yes, that's great.
All right. I'm going to go to the back.
Yes.
All right. Now we have the potential building expenses. So did you want to talk about those? I have a few things to go through with that. As you know, we need a new flagpole, and so I've reached out to Jim Merritt to talk about that. And he has found, it's essentially the flagpole that the police station has. So it's a nice brushed aluminum finish flagpole. It's approximately $850, which seems pretty standard. And there'll be some shipping costs involved too, but we don't know what those will be until we place the order. You know, we could definitely pay for this through the either library gift fund. It won't come out of appropriated money because obviously there's not enough money left in the budget for that. But there's certainly enough money in gift accounts to cover that, or state aid if you'd rather me use state aid. But Jim would take care of the ordering for us, and then the DPW would take care of the install. But I told Jim I would speak with you all first before agreeing to that. But I do think it's the best we're going to get. And it will hold a, the flag size max is five by eight, so it'll be very similar to the pole that we have, but it's rated for 120 mile per hour winds, so that'll be an improvement on this one. So when all of a sudden they say we're probably looking at around $1,000 total.
How long will it take them?
Well, as soon as we order it, it should be pretty quick. But I can't give, until we order it, we won't know the ship date. He doesn't imagine it will take long.
And that goes with installing it too, or?
Yeah, no, Dan's ready to go with that. They know, they know it's a thing. You know, they know we're waiting, we're just waiting for the ground to fall, really, and...
I think we're kind of there.
Yeah, exactly. No, they'd be ready to go, so we could make that happen pretty quickly.
Okay.
So you don't need to necessarily vote on it, but I just want to see if anyone has an objection to that being purchased. Because you can't imagine who would.
I would go ahead and order it.
And is it okay if I use the gift account to pay for that? Is that okay with us if that comes from a gift account?
Sure.
Okay. I also threw on, as a last-minute thing, new computers after the flagpole on the agenda. Our computers were purchased in 2014 for this building in preparation for the move, which happened in 2015, as you know. But the computers, even though Windows 10 was already out, we got Windows 7 on all of the computers. Windows 7 will no longer be supported as of next January. So the sales network has reached out to all libraries to remind them that if we don't want a problem, now come next January with our computers, we're going to want to update our computers. The current quote that I received from sales, if we were to get 10 brand-new computers, which, just in case you don't know, we have five public access computers, PCs, and we have five in the staff area. We also have two for the catalog, but we're not worrying about those right now because if those are running on something that can't be updated, that's okay because it's only being used for the catalog. But our priorities are those 10 computers. So currently, we'd be looking at about $7,000 to replace the 10 computers with Windows 10. Approximately $7,000. I definitely want to be proactive on this and not wait until the end of the year, when I imagine a lot of people are going to be reaching out to sales and to the IT service we get from sales to replace their computers. So I'd like to, within the next couple of months, I would like to have a decision made on this. Even though they're all running Windows 7, the five staff computers are newer computers, so we may be able to do an upgrade to the software on those computers. Dell might support just an upgrade from Windows 7 to Windows 10, but we have to do a little investigating. There's like three criteria the computers have to reach, so we have to figure out whether or not those five staff computers actually meet that criteria. If they do, then that's a huge cost savings. But if they don't, we're looking at around $7,000. So I'm not asking for a decision on any of that today, and I certainly have to come back to you with a bit more research. Hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have that, and we can make a decision then. But I just want to give you a heads up that that's a big expense that's coming a lot closer than we had anticipated in our capital plan. We don't mention computers until I think it's either 2021 or 2022. So we were still, when we made that capital plan, we were thinking this was a few years away, and it's not. So, but just to give you a heads up, that's going to be coming soon. And hopefully, you know, we'll be looking at closer to around maybe $4,000 than the $7,000, but it's going to be in the thousands to get that gone, just so you know. So.
In this case, they take the computer, they take our old?
Um...
You'll buy them from sales?
We buy them...
From sales or through?
No, through sales. They buy them through a company on the, you know, the MHEC vendor list, so they don't have to go through bids or anything because the company's already been approved. So they, they're just facilitating the purchase of the computers for us. And when we buy through the network, we sometimes get a better deal if a lot of people are trying to buy new computers at the same time, so it lowers the cost sometimes, which is why it's more efficient for me to go through sales than it is for me just to go to one of these vendors directly.
I just want to, do they take these in and trade, or do they, or do they say, just do away with them?
They usually just say, do away with them. That's what's happened in the past.
So we could unload them here. We could turn them over to the friends group, and they could...
We could make, we could look into that as an option, but I don't, I don't know, I don't know if that would really work though, because, well, they'd have to be, someone would have to wipe them out, so someone would have to go through and do that. So you'd have to get someone to do that because sales wouldn't do that for us. There'd be a couple of things we'd have to look into for that.
Because it gets to...
The five public computers are old computers, and they would not be good for anybody, so you wouldn't want to see that happen. They were already, yeah, but they were already leased compute, they're just old computers. And I don't think someone who's looking for a computer, I don't think it would be worth it to the friends to do that for like $100.
Okay.
I don't think. But we can, the friends are meeting next week, so I can bring that up next week to the friends. But we'll see. So just, I just really wanted to give, mentioning it today to give you a heads up, especially as we're looking at other expenses, just so you know that we do have that coming down the pipe. So that's... Any questions on that? Okay, good. More on that soon. So I was speaking with Dan Menard. You might remember last summer when we did our concert series out on, we'll go up on from the deck to the back lawn. What do we do for electricity out on the back lawn? Because there is no electricity out on the back lawn. So the DPW had really kind of amazingly Guinea-rigged an overhead wiring system for us, so they ran it from the building overhead. They had poles holding up the wires. It wasn't ideal, but it allowed us to have the concerts on the back lawn, which were quite successful. And we're doing those concerts again this summer. So I happened to see Dan, and I said, you know, any other ideas of what we could do to make, without ripping up the parking lot? Because obviously, we're not going to rip up the parking lot for this. And Dan had a really great suggestion, so I told him I would run it by you all. It would not cost us very much. He wasn't sure how much of the cost it would be to the library, but he does not anticipate it would be very much at all. But he suggested cutting like a two-inch strip across the parking lot and laying down some wire, and then, and an electrician would do that for us. And that, it's like sweet Henry's face here. He's like, no, I don't, I don't know about this. No, but we would have someone take care of it for them.
You're going to slice it, and then you're going to patch it.
And then patch it up. Because at some point, we will be tied to the town sewer, and at that point, the parking lot's going to be ripped up anyway. So it's, that's something that, you know, was discussed last year for, before town meeting, when they appropriated the money to look into what to do to replace our septic, and it's to tie us to town sewer eventually. But, you know, at that point, Dan said, then we could really have something really efficient put in, but for now, this would solve our problem of the overhead wiring. So he cut, cut it, we laid down wire, no, we, they laid down some wire and then patched it up, and it would, it would work for the summer.
That's what they do when they put that fence in for the doors?
Yeah.
The invisible fence. They lay the wire across the driveway and seal it back up.
So, I mean, he, like he said, this isn't something we'd want to do forever. Like that wouldn't, because eventually, that area that's been patched is going to lose its patch. But for the summer, and then, you know, with knowing also that at some point, that parking lot will be dug up, at least in some spots, to attach to sewer. I thought it sounded like a great idea.
Did he have your price?
No, he didn't, he doesn't really think it would cost, I mean, it'd just be whatever the electrician would charge to run the wire, which probably wouldn't be very much. So he just thought it would be minimal, and he said he could definitely take care of that late spring, so that it would be ready to go before the summer. The first concert's not until July, so we still have time. Anyway, but I definitely wanted to make sure I spoke about it with you all before. You just showed up one day, and we were...
He'll be handling with your contract with that?
No, he said he handled the whole thing.
He'll take care of the whole thing?
Yep, he said he'd take care of the whole thing. Yep, and, yeah, it was...
So we don't have to get involved with the electrician?
No, you would do all of that, we just would have to pay.
That's all.
That's it.
Always the case.
Yeah. But he didn't, you know, he thinks it'd be very minimal
Yeah.
for what, what we're talking. So, as long as you're... Does anyone have any objections to that, or do you think we should go ahead?
No, it sounds like not a good solution.
Solution? I think so.
And if we get any stumbling blocks, I'll let you know, but... I would definitely move forward with that.
Okay, good. And then, I did not make copies for everyone. Henry has done some investigating into putting a pergola on the deck so that we have some coverage. And so he did get some information on a 12 by 12 louvered pergola. He spoke with Jim about whether or not it was even a possibility to put something like that on the deck, and where Jim did handle the deck install. You know, he was obviously the right person to speak to about this. And Jim believes this could work. Jim, if we do move forward with something like this, Jim would definitely want to handle it because he feels responsible for the deck and to make sure that nothing happens, there's no damage to the deck. So he said that he would want his department to take care of this if we were to move forward with something. What Henry found is that it, and I haven't done any research on other similar items, but it's about a little under $2,000, and I'll just pass it on the binder so you can see, and we can talk about whether or not we think something like this would be a good fit. We know, we haven't put out the furniture. It's been too cold to put out the deck furniture yet, but I imagine that's going to go out any day now. I think we all personally feel that the deck would be used more if there was some sort of shade on it, because it is in a wide-open spot.
Now that the trees are gone.
But even when the trees were there, the trees didn't offer that much coverage on the deck in defense of that whole thing. It, they really, you had to go to like one little corner to really get, to be covered. But I'm sure if there was something on there, it would be more likely to be used a bit more if it were covered. So this would be 12 by 12. And I guess it would depend on, I don't know which side it would go on. I mean, I don't know if it would be better to have, if something like that were in place, if it would be better to have it on the, you know, close to middle roadside versus the back parking lot side.
How big is the deck?
It'll fit.
Oh, no, I know it'll fit. I'm just wondering how much of the deck, is it like half?
The 12 feet, but it's... It's about a half. Yeah, it's close to me in half.
It's about half. So when you're looking at it, it would be this way?
No, it would be this way.
This way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you want it that way because it has, it has louvers on the top, you know, of this one?
Right.
Has louvers on the top that you can angle, so if the sun isn't too bright, you can block it.
That sounds pretty nice, and a fancy one.
Yeah.
Accessible, the assembly.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is that when I spoke with Jim, he said, ah, a couple of days. I think, it looks like to me, a little more than a couple of days, but... And the other thing is, I made a mistake when I went there. I was under the impression that somebody was going to pay for this. No, no, no. And it's, no, they're not. It's going to come out of the, out of the water, so... You know? But anyway.
You've seen that already.
I have seen it, yeah, I've seen it, yeah.
So do you have any questions, any thoughts?
Jim didn't think, didn't think it would be a big thing as far as putting it up and up.
And it would obviously be permanent, right?
That's true, it don't take it down.
It's a permanent fixture, they don't take it down.
No, it don't take it down, no.
And how do you angle the louvers at the top? Is there like a...
I guess there must be some, you must have something to turn it.
That's what I was thinking, like a blind thing or something.
A line to turn the other, the boards to go out across and then block out and clean it.
Okay, I'm just trying to think if it was, you know, the average person could go out there and just kind of turn the thing?
Well, it's kind of, the average person could do it, but he'd have to get, just probably step on it, and that's not possible. They probably, they probably have, they probably have something to reach up there and then...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, like, all right, if somebody goes out there to read, are they going to have to then come in to get someone from the library to go out there to say, hey, the sun's in my eyes, I need them?
Well...
Or is it going to be...
If they don't know they turn, they're not going to ask.
Right? I don't know, you'd be surprised.
That's good, bad. If you put something out there, you don't know who's on it.
I agree.
Right.
I agree.
I'm trying to see what it says to move it.
I feel like I saw something like a...
Kind of along with that, they have, no any differences. They have to, you have to get the pressure-treated boards, because also, it's plastic, you know, of that type. And you put the two, the four-by-four in, the four-by-four was right. It has to go through the deck right down to the cement that's underneath, the concrete that's underneath there.
There's a bar that comes down, and you just move it that way.
And then they, and then there's some cross pieces on the top that are pressure-treated, so that would be added to it, for, I mean, a four, five hundred dollars at the most price.
And then the later would be nothing, because he's going to do it.
Yes.
But at least we could, more people could use it, sit up here, do it today, you know? We can't do it now.
Yeah, when I was looking at it, because one of the big complaints, or not complaints, comments we've gotten, is that when the sun gets to here and is starting to set, it's just, it doesn't, it wouldn't matter if you had cover overhead because then it would be hitting you from that angle. So, right, so when I was looking at it, I was wondering if there's a way that you could affix something on it as a blind to block that, you know, coming from that direction. Some, something, even if it was just a attempt on a...
Some sort of a shade.
Some sort of, yeah, some kind of a shade. Like, right, like a shade screen, right? Like, which I imagine would be easy to fix to that. And just because that's, we, you figure by that time of day, yes, it's a lot cooler, but if you're trying to read and the sun's coming right at your face, or if we had people on the deck for a program and the sun, that's why it's been difficult to do any kind of music on the deck because the audience, if the group is sitting here with their backs to the sun, the audience facing them can't see. And then if you've got the group on the other side with the audience with the back of the sun, the musicians can't see. So it's, in terms of, you know, any kind of programming on the deck, that would be... But the, I feel like, you know, the way that this would work, the way Jim explained it to me about how they'd have to, you know, attach it, well, they'd have to cut into the deck, he said, so that it goes right into the ground, so that it's not attached to the deck itself. It's a permanent thing, like once, we can't be like, oh, we changed our minds, and this isn't working for us. So, once they are cutting into the deck.
It does have the hardware, shows you what kind of hardware they have to fix it to.
Yeah. So, but, you know, Jim seems to think it would work, and I don't, you know, I don't know how everyone else feels about it. But it would be, it's, it's just, when you...
And the other thing is, it's not something you're going to take down if you...
Right, well, you can't take, you won't be able to take it down. It's there forever.
That's why I was, you're going to have to, you're going to have to get somebody to put a tent up.
Right. Right.
How much usage do you get on the deck now?
Well, we don't have a whole ton, but I think part of it is because it's just, you're in the sun, and it's beating down on you. And we had talked in the past about umbrellas or something, but everything that we've looked at has been extraordinarily expensive. Or also then, if it's, if it's not expensive, then it would be easy to, you know, be walked away with. So...
Because we, Jim suggested some umbrellas.
Right. Right, which sounded like a great idea.
Great idea, we went out to look at it, and they, yeah, they, about $10,000.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Sounded great, yeah.
They were nice, they were nice, but, yeah, I can't...
Well, I don't know what other alternatives that we could, I mean, think of. I mean, we want people to use the tech because that's what it's there for.
Right.
But, like you said, I mean, the umbrellas, we either walk away, or blow away, or require someone to go out there and bring them out there, and bring them inside.
No, those, those are, those are just...
No, no, those are just too expensive.
They're, they're, they're permanent.
But, I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's anything else if we're going to do anything else out there.
Do we want to maybe investigate to see, you know, what other prices there are? To kind of compare that one to others?
If, if the trustees are paying for it, we would need some other options versus just going with one because of the amount. So we would need to take a look to see. This one is, is it Home Depot?
They may have come, yeah.
Home Depot.
Home Depot, it's, they, they've got a whole, they've got different models, but that happened to be the one that has the adjustable, so as a son, you could...
One of them was hot scope price.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I see that here too.
Yeah.
So look, that's two right there, so we have a third option, right? Just so that there are, you know, you know what the options are before.
I think it would be, I think it would be something to look into a little bit further.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely with the, maybe with the louvered slats and without, just, just to get a, kind of a comparison as to, I mean, it may be worth paying a couple hundred dollars more for the option than not.
Is that something Jim could have his guys build?
I don't think they'd have the time to do something like that right now.
No, I think it's a project.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't think, they've, they've got a lot going on in that department, and I don't think a build would be, or we'd be, it wouldn't happen for the summer, that's for sure. They could definitely, if something was purchased, they could install it for the summer.
But I don't, yeah, I don't think they could.
If they were building it, we would end up on a list.
And it would not be a priority.
And it would certainly wouldn't be a priority. So I, I mean, I can mention that to him, and just to get that answer for you, but I'm pretty sure I know the answer, which is no.
Makes sense.
But, you know, at the same time that they installed a fence we're supposed to be getting, then maybe they could all show us that. Which you all agreed to last year. So we're still waiting on the fence. Any idea when that's going to happen? No, he said it's on, it's, it's towards the top of the list. It's just not at the top of the list.
Eventually, it'll get there.
It's going to happen. It's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. And they've got a lot going on, that's a small department doing a lot of stuff, so.
Okay, so we can, um, do some more research, did you want us to do that? Did you, facilities might want to, Diana, do you wanna get like one?
Okay.
One option?
Mm-hmm.
We have two. So if you get one more.
Sorry, you went to Home Depot and?
That's Home Depot and Costco.
Costco.
Oh.
Oh, who's?
And I, I'll, I'll speak with Jim also about, just to get indefinite, no, we can't build that.
And I think, is it Costco, it may be that, it may, you get, you go to Costco and you go to Home Depot, but it may be the same product.
Same product, right, right.
It couldn't very be a different name.
Different, okay.
Yeah.
Did Jim have any other suggestions?
Well, no, because.
We haven't asked that question.
No, well, we have in the past, but his other suggestion would be umbrellas that were ten dollar, so, no, so we've had that conversation.
Oh, I betcha.
Yeah, so we've, I think that was the. Yeah, the big thought before was the umbrellas. That wouldn't be happening.
No.
So.
Anybody else have anything else on the deck? Shade, I guess we could call it. The deck shade.
And I have one more thing to throw in that just came to my attention this week.
Okay.
Um, so I was speaking with Jim about a few other things, and he said something about, oh, and the grant for the charging stations, and I was like, what are you talking about? So, um, as you may know, Town Hall and Council on Aging both have charging stations for electric cars. Um, and Jim had applied for a grant through Eversource. Uh, or it's from Eversource through the DEP for, um, additional charging stations throughout town, and he included the library in the grant proposal, so I had just forgotten to mention that we included in that. So, um, so I could talk to my trustees about that, Jim, just so that you can see. Uh, so he sent me a Google Earth, um, picture of the building, which I'll pass around, and the proposed stations may need to be close to the street, because they would, Eversource would go right from the pole to the charging station, so it wouldn't involve any work being done inside the building. But, um, two, one station would be in the, um, northwest corner of the parking lot. And the other station would be between two of the handicap spots in the front. Um, when I, and I'll pass this around so you can see it better, when I spoke with Jim, and you know, I wasn't prepared to ask questions, because I didn't know this would be brought up, I understood him in that conversation to say that one of the, um, handicap spots would need to be relocated as a result of this. Um, and I tried to get a confirmation from him on whether or not I understood that correctly, uh, before today's meeting, and I didn't hear back from him. Uh, because I don't know how you all would feel about that, but we had to work really hard to get those three handicap spots where they are, and I, I would hate to see that now have to be moved, and I'm, I'm not quite sure, I don't, I don't understand where they would be moved to, that it would be appropriate, or one would be moved to. So I'm, I'm hoping that I misunderstood him, um, and that, uh, that's not what it means, but I'm pretty sure that's what he said.
That they put two together down on that side of the building.
I don't think they can, um, no, I don't think so, I think he explained some, you know, I didn't quite understand, it's kinda over my head, but I'm pretty sure they have to be a certain, it, that, yeah, you can only have a certain amount there. So the ones on the northwest corner, that's not a problem at all, and, but the one. But then when I had asked him with the northwest corner, I said, so if someone's parked there and an electric car comes along, do they have to move, like, how does this work? And he said, no, so then my thought is, well, then why would we need to move the handicap spots if the vehicles wouldn't be in the way of the electric car charging, so I wish I had gotten a better answer on that for you, and I don't, so I won't be able to answer anything if you do have any questions. He just, when he brought it up to me, I immediately said, you know, I, the board would need to know about this, and so he got me that in time for today's meeting. And that's really all I know.
I think they have a sign, if I'm not mistaken, I think here, so I think it was, it's almost like if you're a handicap spot, then you wouldn't park in the handicap spot.
Right.
You shouldn't park in a handicap spot if you're not handicapped.
Right, right.
So you wouldn't park, or you shouldn't park in the electric electric car.
Vehicle spot.
If you're not an electric vehicle.
But, you know, there are times where this parking lot is full capacity, and we would need those spots for the cars that are not electric cars that need to be parked.
Well, how about the first, the first, the first slot as you come in?
Well, those technically aren't, when you're driving in, those, those technically aren't spots, and in fact, we've talked about this in the past, the DPW has said that they're going to paint lines for us. The, the space behind the handicap spots, those aren't parking spots, there are no lines there, yet people park there all the time, which is not good for the handicap cars, the, people who park in the handicap spots, as they're backing up, they, they don't have enough room sometimes to make a turn, because they're, they've got cars there that technically are not supposed to be there, but we do have spots, but they're further up.
Yeah, but we do have, we do have. Right, but the first, the first.
So the first one is sort of parallel to the deck.
Yeah, wouldn't that be okay?
Right.
Oh, is that the top?
I'm not sure, that's, we'd have to, we'd have to make sure of that before we said, oh, yeah, just put the handicap spot wherever you want it, like, that's, you know, we. It would, it would maybe be fine, I mean, it would maybe be as equally distant as the further spot, but I would just like to know the answer to that before we go around reconfiguring the parking lot and having to redirect our patrons, I mean, there are times of the day where those three spots are completely full.
I think you have to put something there too, cause you have to be able to plug your vehicle in.
Okay.
For the spot, cause that, I mean, it's just, if you pack in the spot.
Right.
He said something about a card, that you don't have to plug in?
Yeah, did. I, I didn't understand, I don't know.
I assume that if you pull into the spot, it's just not automatically gonna charge your vehicle.
Well, no, he said something about a card, if you had that.
That would be amazing, yeah.
That's a hard to pay.
We'll have to.
No, I don't, I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Yeah, you just point the car, so.
I was doing, they're doing the issues with the handicap, Henry, across the driveway, is people would have to cross the driveway. We ran into that.
Who's gonna cross?
If you put the handicap.
No, not, no.
Not handicap.
Handicap stays by itself.
Oh, yes, and.
Oh, you're saying for the charging station, so, no, the charging station was, that would be too far.
Charging station. I have been saying. In the first, that would be just walking down the street?
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, sorry, I totally missed what someone did, that I'm sorry.
I thought you said the hard handicap.
Sorry.
So is it possible to just have one, or do, or do we have to have two?
I'm not sure, again, like, yeah, I don't know.
Right, we don't know.
So I, that's definitely, that's why I wanted to bring it up today, so that I could also get some questions from you or concerns that you might have, so I can bring that back to him and get answers on that, so question would be, do we have to have two?
Right, do we have to have two?
Two, I mean.
Does, is it going to take away a handicap spot if we do have two?
At the Town Hall, do they have one or two?
I believe there's one at Town Hall and one at the Council on Aging.
And how much, how much are they used?
I'm not sure, they're primarily used by the town vehicles that are electric vehicles, I'm, I don't know if there are, I don't know anyone, I personally don't know anyone who has an electric vehicle to know whether or not.
I mean, if that's the case, maybe one will, will be enough, I mean, except for this side of town?
Would be enough, right. Right. And we're not the only ones that are a part of this grant, I'm not sure who else is a part of this grant, but we're, we're not the only building, so there are, I don't know if the schools are part of it, and, you know, maybe that's taking up care of things further up town. But, but I will find out if we have to have two, or if we could just have the one, and if the handicap spots would, that does indeed mean they need to be moved.
And maybe who else is involved with? Just in case, like you said, if it's the school, or the DPW, or the, they have a gas station.
Right. Right, right.
Why not an electric charge?
I mean, I think it's a great idea, and I think Jim does apply for a lot of really cool sounding grants, he does have a lot of opportunities that pop up like that, that I think are, you know, moving the town forward, you know.
Pays for the electricity.
I believe the person who owns the car, it doesn't affect our electric at all, they're just tapping on, right, they're just tapping on.
That's what the car, that's what the car. That's what are the curries.
The pole that's in front of our building.
I think it's almost like a gas station for electric vehicles, right?
Right. I think that's, that's probably a good way of looking at it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look that up.
Any other questions on that? Good. So, a lot of that was, I'll come back with more, we'll, we'll discuss that more later. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda are the town meeting articles pertaining to the library.
Yes.
So, good news, as you know, Town Meeting is Monday, May thirteenth at seven PM, and I hope you all will be there, I will be there in the cheap seats along the side, as I'm not a resident, but I go to every town meeting. So I hope you will all be able to be there as well. Um, as you know, there, uh, the library only has its usual two standard articles in the warrant, we don't have anything extra special this year, but the good news is that the article that we have in every year, which is for the authorization to sell discarded books and periodicals, um, has been moved by the town meeting moderator to the consent agenda, so that's, he did this last year also, where it's like eight or nine articles just get sort of lumped into one item at the beginning of town meeting, and, um, residents have the option to just pass that all through in one fell swoop, versus waiting to get to Article thirty-five, which is what this would have been. So, um, that also means, the good news part is that the trustees don't have to get up to present that article, so it happens as part of the consent agenda, so. That's just a heads up on that, and the other article that we have in is for the revolving fund, and once again, that's been included with the other town revolving funds, so it does not require a trustee to present that, um, article, so it's a very, um, I don't know, easy, uh, town meeting for the library, but I do still, I'll still hope that you're all able to be there to, uh, support the library and all other town departments and requests that have gone into this, uh, budget, they've worked hard on putting this all together, it's a lot of work. And, uh, we do have warrants here, so if you would like to see a copy of the warrant, we have, uh, plenty here at the library, available, and, um, we do have, we have been on the back page, the library's had a nice ad the past two town meetings, but this year we're on the inside back page, which actually, I'm kind of happy about, because I feel like maybe people don't flip it over and see what's on the back, but they'll see that, so. So there we are with this, our, a little recap of our, uh, past year, and then we have coming with Summer Reading and the Centennial, um, celebration. All I wanted to say about that.
Excellent. And the director's report? Yes, and more announcements?
Yes, and, and.
Endor announcements.
Endor announcements, yeah.
So I sent you a director's report from March and April. Um, I didn't know if you wanted to start receiving reports from, um, Sandra and some Patron Services Associate, and, or Bethany as the Children's Room Assistant. I usually report on what they're doing within my report, so if you're okay with just that, then we can keep doing just the director's report, if you want a little bit more, we can branch out, but you can, you don't have to answer me now, and I, you can, you know, what you might think, but, um. Um, as I said, even though we're, uh, sort of with the biggest staff that this library's ever seen, but it doesn't seem to make any difference. Cause, but I think it's just because the library is, um, extraordinarily busy, I also gave you the statistics for April, and when you do a comparison from April of eighteen to April of nineteen, um, there really is no comparison, and we circulated over three thousand more items this year than last year at the same time. Um, our program attendance is about the same as, you know, we, we offered, you know, one less program this year, and with, with higher attendance, but it, it's, it's about the same, but the circulation itself, just every month, it's, I'm more and more surprised um, at how high it is, and not, actually not surprised, cause I see it at the counter, but it just feels, I guess I feel validated in a sense. We're, we're busier now than ever, so.
It's great.
It's just on every category too.
Every category, yeah.
It's not just one, you know, DVDs we've talked about, but it's all categories.
It's up, it's, it's like amazing to see. And so, and please, anytime anyone, you hear someone saying that children don't read, or that parents only let their kids use their iPads, and they're not using, you know, they're not sitting down and reading, you know, we circulated over thirty-three hundred children's books in the month of April, so someone's reading those books, it's not just me, and Bethany, some kids are reading them too, so. Anyway. In terms.
People counter two.
Yeah, the people counter two.
People counter two, twenty-two hundred or two thousand?
And that's only off the front doors, we keep talking, it does include the side door, cause I'm still working on prices for the side door.
Non-resident circulation.
Yep.
Cause people coming in from.
From other communities.
From New Bedford.
Yes. So we circulated, it's over eight thousand items in total, and thirty-one hundred of those items were checked out to non-residents. So, right, those are people coming in from, who have library cards from other communities. Which is, yeah, pretty amazing in itself, so.
It's exciting to see.
Yeah, just a good job.
Yeah.
And you're still.
It's great to see.
That's pretty nice.
Um. Did you, did anyone have any questions about the director's report? Okay. Um. On the updates portion of the director's report, I mentioned that the front hall light is still out, that's since been replaced, so that was replaced last Friday, so that's great. And I also mentioned that we had the Third Annual Meet Your Farmer Event coming up this past Monday, and we had sixty-five people, uh, attend the event on Monday, it was really well received, we had a small tractor for a touch tractor portion of the night, um, we also had a baby goat that was quite adorable. And the people who brought the goat suggested maybe next year they could bring some baby pigs, and I'm not sure if they were joking, or if they were being serious, but I really hope they were being serious. We had live bees, um, we had, uh, at least four or five different farmers representing. It was really, it's, it's a lovely event, it was the third time we've done it, Sandra puts it all together, she spends a lot of time coordinating the event, she does a fantastic job of pulling it all off, so. Um, everyone who's here was really enjoying themselves. So just to give you the update on that. In terms of things coming up, on Saturday, May eighteenth, we have local author Stan Grayson here at one PM to talk about his book, A Man for All Oceans. We don't often do Saturday programs for adults, so we're excited to have that happening on May eighteenth at one. Um, Sandra's launched the movie program for adults, and that's going quite well, um, we're hoping that, um, on May twenty-eighth, which is a Tuesday, um, we show Operation Finale at two PM, that we have a good turnout for that, that people were able to vote on what they would like to see, so that the results were Operation Finale. Have, as always, a lot of children's programs scheduled, and we'll be having more as we get closer to Summer Reading, so I encourage everyone to look at the online calendar. ACUPL dot org is the website, click the calendar option, and, um, see what we have going on, because there's a lot, a lot going on, we'd be here for another half an hour if I wasn't at all.
Another question?
Yes.
The, um, deliveries to the homebound cable is increasing, is there?
Yes. Um, we're about, uh, we're pretty steady, we did fourteen deliveries from March second to April thirtieth. Um, from January to March, we, I think we had eleven deliveries, so it's, it's slight increase, it's pretty much the same, it's the same people, um. We have, you know, just a, a core group of people who call every other week or so and say they're ready for some more, so. Um, but we're, we're always interested in having newcomers to sign up for the homebound delivery program, which you can, anyone can sign up, any accredited resident can sign up by giving us a call.
I don't know.
Here at the library, yeah, it's a great program, I'm really happy with that one.
Other than that?
Pretty much.
Pretty busy here.
Yes.
It's a very busy place.
That's all we have on the agenda?
Yes.
Do we wanna set the meeting time for? Is someone good for me?
I think it's June, it's, it's the eighth, I think it's the, it's the fifteenth and twenty-ninth, or fifteenth. How about June fifth, Wednesday, June fifth?
That's fine.
That's fine for me?
Nope.
Some, yeah, I think.
Some, yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah, for some reason I'm picking this, but I don't have, I can't, but I think it's okay.
Okay, okay.
And what, same time?
Same time, that'll be 4:30?
Yeah, that'll be great.
Okay, Wednesday, June 5th at 4:30. Okay. All right, we have no other business, we need a motion to adjourn.
I like a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor? This May 8th, 2019, meaning of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned, it is 5:20.